Um, well, it depends on which parts, which decisions are required. Which two of the decisions? So.
Well, yeah, a lot of people were. Hello? How are you?
I mean, that's a great presentation. It's going to find me after seven.
No. I want to say that. I don't have the last.
I didn't know. Yeah, I think it's.
Why is that there? No problem up here.
Hi, Susan. Are you ready, Mrs. Rip?
Yeah.
You've got out of control tonight. Oh, good, thank you. And go. Thank you. All right, good evening, everybody. It's Monday, October 21st at 7:02 in the evening. Meeting for the City Council of Woodland, a regular meeting this tonight. If I can get everyone to please silence your cellphones, thank you. Silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Rip, will you please take the roll this evening?
Councilmember Frederick.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Plaza.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember over.
Here.
Hey, Ms. Coleman, can you grab another agenda for me, please? Sorry, it's my first day.
Thank you.
All right, everyone is accounted for this evening. And we have a presentation this evening from Clark County Fire and Rescue on the inspection program. So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Jackson. And I'd like to, the council recognized Chief Nor in the back of the room. Good evening, sir. Good to see you. All right, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I provided a copy essentially of the same slides that we had on the presentation before. It's just kind of a quick outline. We've been working with the city staff, looking at a fire inspection program. And it's come out of a few different things. We have had some responses to some businesses in the community that have helped us realize that there have been some areas that perhaps have been lacking as far as from a fire prevention standpoint. And we've been fortunate that with Chief Nor and our direction over the last strategic plan was looking at how can we be a little bit more proactive and try to be on the front end of these things, knowing that there's certain risks in small communities, especially with small businesses. And if we can prevent those emergencies and help keep those folks in business, that's really some of the best service we can provide. So it's been a bit of a shift in our organization to kind of move towards that. And we'll talk a little bit about how and why those things come. So on the next page, just a couple of quick things about the fire problem. And a lot of these are kind of national and Western, but looking at obviously the number of fires, significant number of deaths. We kill close to 3,000 people a year in structured fires.
We?
In the United States, as a nation, as a nation.
I just want to make sure that I didn't do something.
Direct property damage, over 10 billion. In the, in the West, it's a little bit worse than the rest of the nation on a per capita basis. And specifically in Washington, it's a little bit higher than most at about eight deaths per million. And it's hard to not look at it a little bit broader than just our local community because if you look at 8.4 per million, which that's still not necessarily a huge number, but if, if we take that down to a community the size of Woodland, it's not that we're necessarily having a fatality every year, but over the course of time, we do have a little bit higher rate than most places. And statistically, cities within this population range of 5,000 to 10,000 have a much significant higher rate of fires, fire deaths and injuries. And a lot of that comes down to the ability of those organizations to be preventive and do fire inspections, adequate fire investigations and those pieces. So that's really where that comes from. And, and they typically have fewer response resources. I think the city was progressive when they looked at consolidation and pooling our resources with our neighbors, with Ridgefield, La Center, Clark Fire District Two, and the folks around us to kind of pool our resources and be able to build a little bit better response. And now we're able to kind of take that to the next level and provide some of these services that historically we haven't in the past. Specifically, when we talk about code enforcement on the next page, we talk about the International Fire Code, which is a, it's important to understand, it's a nationally recognized standard. There are a few amendments, but when we look at the fire codes that we're enforcing, it really isn't any different here than it is anywhere else in the state of Washington or in about 48 other states for that matter. So it's, it's a pretty standardized code that's adopted nationwide with a few amendments here and there, but it's, it's not something unique or more stringent. It's a pretty well-recognized standard. The issue becomes to the ability of folks to enforce that. And from a, from a technical end, the code exists whether it's enforced or not, and then that can just have a, have a play on liabilities and impact some of those things. Specifically, I cited the RCW, which talks about enforcement of fire codes in the state of Washington is specifically a city function or a county function. So it hasn't necessarily caught up with fire districts and regional fire authorities and some of the combined efforts that have become a more popular thing across the state. So outright as a fire district, we don't actually have the authority to enforce fire codes at all. And the state law is not very specific, which is one of those things that leads it to be a little bit of an issue when it comes to liability and managing the city's risk. The state simply says that city shall enforce the fire code. Doesn't say that you have to do that every year or that you have to do that just when it's built. It just says you have to enforce the fire code. So I think most of us can assume that that probably isn't going to become much of an issue until you have a bad circumstance with a fire that has a significant dollar loss, a fatality, some sort of thing that's going to tie folks to start to look for blame and cause there. And there would be some, some concern and risk for the city as far as if, if they're not taking those actions to enforce the fire code. On the next page, it just talks a little bit more about that, which you have a copy in front of you. So the city is responsible to enforce the fire code, but there are options. It does say that the city can contract or have someone else do that on their behalf. But what that also means is at the end of the day that the city is still in control. So if the city, the city having us do fire inspections, if there's an issue or something that becomes contentious, the city still has complete and full rights to make decisions on that that serve the best interest of the city. In our case, and looking at the next page, so the challenge in, in our case is we, we protect three cities and some unincorporated area. The three cities have very similar needs, very similar in size, being the city of Woodland, city of La Center and city of Ridgefield. Although all those cities, none of them really had a good ability to enforce the fire code individually, so through a series of different contracts, those cities were in the past contracting with the Clark County Fire Marshal's Office. In Calhoun County, the county actually contracts out their fire code enforcement to Calhoun Fire District Two. And for them to take on other cities has been a challenge and not something that has really fit within their scope or what they've been trying to do. So with that, the city looked at the Clark County Fire Marshal's Office and up until whenever we got involved, about a year and a half ago, new construction and new development review and stuff was done by the county, and the city essentially hasn't been doing existing fire inspections. And that's been for some time. Our other two cities that we serve were kind of in the same boat. We, knowing that it fit our mission, wanted to take a little bit more of an approach on that and a little bit more active involvement in how we can prevent these things. So on the next page, it's kind of one of those, what's, what is our approach to this? And when we look at that, we were looking at to aggregate the needs of the three cities and share those resources because it's one of those that any one of those cities alone isn't necessarily in a position to maintain a full-time person doing this kind of work. Right now, we're experiencing a fair amount of growth, so we have a lot of our resources dedicated to new construction. And those programs are built to essentially pay for themselves. So when folks build a new project and we do the plans review and inspections, they pay for permits and fees that, that fund that position. And that's kind of where we started. The other two cities that we have were contracted with the county to do existing occupancy inspections as well, but had some concerns with the service level and responsiveness they were getting on that as well as the communication with the city. So they reached out to us to perform those services along with the new construction. We're looking for a little bit better efficiency, improved sustainability as development fluctuates. So right now, we have a fair amount of development. We're putting some resources on that. But if development slows down, then where do we do it? And as we kind of pool these things together and we're doing existing occupancy inspections, new construction work, then it's a little bit more easy to kind of keep the service consistent and ride those ebbs and flows with changes in development and, and economic changes. We look at a common, consistent approach, knowing that that becomes an issue too when folks say, well, things are different or enforced differently in this city versus this city, or the county versus the city. So we work with our partners to make sure that we're consistent with what, what everyone else is doing, but make sure that our approach across our three cities is also very consistent and streamlined and the folks know what to expect. And especially with new construction stuff, that's been a big piece because it's mostly the same developers and contractors that are doing projects around, and it's helpful for them whenever they know exactly what to expect and what that process is. For us, it improves our expertise with response and understanding of the businesses that are out there. That's been one of the challenges before, especially with new construction, or if there were hazards, we wouldn't necessarily know about it until the alarm hits. I mean, we could see a new building rise up just like everybody else could, but beyond that, we weren't really involved in the process. We're able to fine-tune those things to make sure that it, that it met our needs from a response planning standpoint. Strong customer service is what, what we're after. Obviously, the customers that are the city's customers, business owners, developers are the same folks that are our customers as well. So keeping those folks happy and informed is, is critical. And I think that was a little bit of a change where when it was contracted out to the county, the county in the cities didn't necessarily have much of a dealing with those folks other than with their fire code enforcement. So for us, I think it brings us a little bit closer and aligns our interests a little bit closer with the city there. So the next page, looking at the challenge, or maybe we're two pages down. I think on our next slide there, if you don't mind. So our need here and what we're after is essentially reducing the risk, save lives and protect property. That really is our main overall mission, which is pretty clear. Most people understand that about our organization. We want to protect businesses and employment, kind of like we talked about before. If there is a fire, especially with a small business, unfortunately, we know that the likelihood of that small business returning to normal operation or surviving a devastating effect of a fire is, is little to nil. And I think whenever we look at our employment and things in a small community, it just becomes that much more profound. So we want to make sure that the businesses can stay in the community effective and not be impacted by these things. It does impact insurance rates, the protection classification, which is done by Washington Survey and Ratings. 16% of that is based off fire inspections and fire marshal work. So right now, that's, that is not being done. For our three cities, it places Woodland's protection class a little bit lower than our other cities, which has a direct impact on, on insurance rates and more specifically commercial property insurance even more so than residential, although it affects all insurance rates. So it's one of those things that, that it will also have an impact on insurance rates, help us to maintain those and hopefully even lower those, those rates over time. It is tough to put a very specific number on that because where all the insurance companies have to use the protection class to determine their rates, it's fairly wide open how they do that. So some places, the protection class is 50% of how they calculate their rates, another company, it might be 20%. So it really depends on who people's insurance carriers are, but it does impact all of them. For us, we talked about response planning and safety, managing risk for our responders as well as being prepared and knowing what's out there ahead of the response is a key piece. And then I think it, it helps us be a little bit more engaged with the community. Moving on, when we talk about engaged with the community, kind of our whole approach is, is education more so than enforcement. We're, we're looking for folks to meet the fire code and comply there, but it's not about generating fines. We don't really have a, a structure for fines unless folks are just completely negligent and not willing to work with it. So we work with businesses on a timeline that works for them and try to move towards that end goal of, of being a safer community and, and building those relationships. So obviously, the key, the thing that comes up is looking at what is this going to cost our businesses? And essentially, the rates, before we looked at the program and the, our fee structure has been adopted by the city previously. Whenever we got involved in new construction and plans review and inspections for new development, our fee structure was comprehensive there, and that was adopted by the council. At the time, we just were not engaged in the existing inspection. So we're moving forward with that in January, coordinating with, with the city staff. Rates were developed a year and a half or two years ago, have not changed since we did that rate study. And we looked at everyone around us, being the counties, the other cities from Longview to Calhoun County to what Clark County was doing and Camas, anyone that was doing these sorts of things, and looking at what their fee structures were. And then working with the chief, knowing that we wanted the program to be able to fund half of the program. We recognize the value in hoping to lower response, keep things safer for our folks and build a better response, which is what we're, we are already funded and tasked to do. We see the benefit with that. So fortunately, the leadership in the district has seen that the program does not have to completely fund itself. As long as it offsets that, then some of our current revenue, we're willing to put towards this cause to, to make things a little bit more effective out there. So that's essentially what the, what the rate structure comes to. Schedules on occupancies is based off the hazard. So low hazards, small businesses, small business offices would be once every two to three years. Places that have a specific hazardous process with flammable liquids or large industrial processes, places where folks sleep overnight, hotels, motels, where there's a higher risk either to people or to property, then those would go up, up, up to once a year for highest hazard occupancies. So inspections would be depending on the type of business every one to three years. And our, and our plan is starting this work in January. And I think that, that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Mr. Jackson, did I hear you correctly that you do, this is just for our information only, you're just going to proceed forward with this beginning in January? What do you need from us?
We just wanted council to be informed. We're, we're, our approach is to start inspections in January. It was determined that with the fees already having been adopted by council, that it's an administrative process. But the mayor and staff wanted to make sure that you were informed, and we had time on the front end of this. With us starting in January, we're going to make sure there's communication and outreach to the businesses so they know what to expect. We can reach out with Chamber and those things so that we can have question and answer and kind of let folks know what it's about and give folks time to have their questions answered.
Can I clarify those administrative costs? How will those, how will that work? So I own a, I own a business that is 75,000 square feet, which means my bill's going to probably be $200. How are you collecting that administratively?
So the fire district will, will collect that directly. So the inspection is coordinated. We have a, an automated system for our inspections, our inspection tracking, inspection records, notice of violations and those things that go along with inspections. And then with that, at the time the inspection is completed, a fee is generated, and then that bill gets sent electronically to the, the property owner or the business owner, whoever's responsible for it. And I would say the, if we have issues with, obviously, folks will get notices if, if fees are not paid. If it becomes an ongoing issue, then we would coordinate with the city to, to rectify that and figure out how, how we need to approach that. If it becomes a business licensing issue or, or where we're at, if it comes time for the following inspection, obviously, and fees haven't been paid, then we would reach out to the city to see how we want to approach that.
And to clarify, Ridgefield and La Center are also doing this?
Yes, they, they were all, they were doing this work with the county fire marshal's office prior, and they have not stopped. They just shifted that work to us as opposed to the county fire marshal's office.
Are you aware of any, any lawsuits that someone has been successfully able to collect against a city or a county that was not fully enforcing the code?
I am not aware, and I'll be honest, and I have not spent much time trying to research that either. So obviously, there's a potential and a perceived liability there, but as far as how that's been enacted on, I, I don't have any information regarding that.
Thank you, Chief Jackson. Go. Anything else?
Just out of curiosity on this, the needs and benefits that you have listed here on this last page. So if I'm a business owner and I'm not currently getting a benefit to having your agency coming out and inspecting my location for a proactive fire, how do I ensure that I'm getting a discount on my insurance? Because that's, you're, in essence, that's what you're saying here is that I can call my insurance carrier and say, hey, I'm...
It's a, it's a little bit of a convoluted and drawn-out process. In the, in the state of Washington, Washington Survey and Ratings Bureau, the WSRB, is a state sanctioned organization that is funded by the insurance carriers. And they are, they provide statistics and information for insurance companies to determine their rates. One of the key pieces for property insurance is their protection class that they assign to all cities. And they will reassess that on their own without any instance at least every 10 years. And I think they're actually trying to do it about every five years. So about every five years, they will go to each community, use their rating schedule and assign a protection classification. Washington's unique. It's one of four states that has a state bureau that does this. The other 46 states use ISO, which is called the Insurance Services Office. Essentially does the same thing. They're just a national organization where Washington's is, is specific to the state. They provide that protection classification, and they provide that to their subscribing insurance company members. And then the Washington State Board of Insurance approves insurance rates. So any insurance company, whether that's Allstate, Farmers, State Farm, GEICO, they have rate formulas that have to be approved by the state. And their rate formulas typically, almost always include, and I actually, I can't speak real clearly on this, I believe in Washington that all folks use the protection class to some point. There may be a few exceptions there, but, so they, they submit their rate formulas to the state. The State Board of Insurance approves how they set their rates, and the protection class is usually a significant piece of that. That can vary by company to company, whether they use a higher swing to actuarials or whether they're looking more specifically at protection classes. But they'll use that to calculate their rates, and that goes from there. So if we, and we have a copy of the schedule, we're in touch with these folks on a regular basis. If we believe we have done things like implemented an inspection program that would have an impact on that protection class, we will call them out to do another assessment and regrade us. When they regrade, they provide that information to the insurance companies, and then we would certainly help, help to publicize that. For instance, when Woodland consolidated with Clark County Fire and Rescue, at our next rating, we went from a, one is the best, 10 is no, no fire protection. And the city of Woodland went from a six to a five. So we improved that grade by one point. There's currently no Class Ones in the state of Washington, and there's only a couple of Class Twos.
Did I hear you correctly in your presentation? Maybe I didn't hear correctly, but I thought I heard you say that Woodland had a lower protection classification than Ridgefield and La Center.
They, they did prior to consolidation. Now they have the same.
Okay. And they have inspections and we don't?
Correct. They're, they're...
How does that get better?
They both, well, so they, they all currently have a five, although Woodland is a lower five, closer to a six than they are.
So now we're doing decimal points?
Yeah, you, you could say that. Collectively, as an organization, we're looking to try to move towards a four. And they're, they're kind of, they're, the rates generally follow in pairs, so a one to two isn't as big of a jump as a two to three. Three to four, not as big of a jump as four to five. So for us, getting from a five to four would be a more substantial impact than, than was the six to five. And without the inspection program, there is not likely any chance of us being able to get to a four.
Thank you for answering my question.
Certainly.
Anything further for Chief Jackson? All right. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
All right. One thing did get missed off the agenda this evening, and that was a proclamation in regards to Make a Difference Day. So Ms. Coleman, did you want to join me up front, or did you want me to read this from the DS?
Sure.
Come on up. All right. Again, I apologize if this didn't make the agenda this evening. Make a Difference Day, October 26, 2019. Whereas serious so... Hold on one second. I can't see anymore either. I'm just, I'm having a problem tonight. Here we go. All right. Whereas serious social problems concern our nation and threaten its future, and whereas connection with others and working together through volunteer service can bridge differences that separate people and help solve serious social problems. And whereas we, the American people, have a strong tradition of philanthropy... I can't say the word. Philanth... Help me out.
Philanthropy.
Thank you. And volunteerism. I can't get my mouth to move that way. And volunteerism. Whereas USA Weekend Magazine and its affiliate newspapers, the Points of Light Foundation and its affiliate volunteer centers have joined together to promote, to promote an annual national day of doing good that celebrates and strengthens the spirit of volunteer service. And whereas millions of self-sacrificing individuals touch and enhance the lives of millions of national Make a Difference Day by giving where there is a need, rebuilding what has been torn down, teaching where there is a desire to learn and inspiring those who may have lost hope. And whereas volunteer service is an investment in the future, we must share.
That it's an administrative process. But the mayor and staff want to make sure that you were informed, and we had time on the front end of this. With us starting in January, we're going to make sure there's communication and outreach to the businesses so they know what to expect. We can reach out with Chamber and those things so that we can have question and answer and kind of let folks know what it's about and give folks time to have their questions answered.
Can I clarify those administrative costs? How will those, how will that work? So I own a, I own a business that is 75,000 square feet, which means my bill's going to probably be $200. How are you collecting that administratively?
So, the fire district will, will collect that directly. So the inspection is coordinated. We have a, an automated system for our inspections, our inspection tracking, inspection records, notice of violations and those things that go along with inspections. And then with that, at the time the inspection is completed, a fee is generated. And then that bill gets sent electronically to the property owner or the business owner, whoever's responsible for it. And I would say the, if we have issues with, obviously folks will get notices if, if fees are not paid. If it becomes an ongoing issue, then we would coordinate with the city to, to rectify that and figure out how we need to approach that. If it becomes a business licensing issue or where we're at, if it comes time for the following inspection, obviously fees haven't been paid, then we would reach out to the city to see how we want to approach that.
And to clarify, Ridgefield and the Center are also doing this?
Yes, they, they were all, they were doing this work with the county fire marshal's office prior, and they have not stopped. They just shifted that work to us as opposed to the county fire marshal's office.
Are you aware of any, any lawsuits that someone has been successfully able to collect against a city or a county that was not fully enforcing the code?
I am not aware, and I'll be honest, and I have not spent much time trying to research that either. So I, obviously there's a potential and a perceived liability there, but as far as how that's been enacted on, I don't have any information regarding that.
Thank you, Chief Jackson. Anything else? Yes.
Just out of curiosity on this, the needs and benefits that you have listed here on this last page. So if I'm a business owner and I'm not currently getting a benefit to having your agency coming out and inspecting my location for proactive fire, how do I ensure that I'm getting a discount on my insurance? Because that's, in essence, that's what you're saying here, is that I can call my insurance carrier and say, hey, I'm...
It's a, it's a little bit of a convoluted and drawn-out process. In the, in the state of Washington, Washington Survey and Ratings Bureau, the WSRB, is a state sanctioned organization that is funded by the insurance carriers. And they are, they provide statistics and information for insurance companies to determine their rates. One of the key pieces for property insurance is their protection class that they assign to all cities. And they will reassess that on their own without any instance at least every 10 years. And I think they're actually trying to do it about every five years. So about every five years, they will go to each community, use their rating schedule and assign a protection classification. Washington's unique. It's one of four states that has a state bureau that does this. The other 46 states use ISO, which is called the Insurance Services Office. Essentially does the same thing, they're just a national organization where Washington's is, is specific to the state. They provide that protection classification, and they provide that to their subscribing insurance company members. And then the Washington State Board of Insurance approves insurance rates. So any insurance company, whether that's Allstate, Farmers, State Farm, GEICO, they have rate formulas that have to be approved by the state. And their rate formulas typically, almost always include, and I actually, I can't speak real clearly on this, I believe in Washington that all folks use the protection class to some point. There may be a few exceptions there, but, so they, they submit their rate formulas to the state. The state board of insurance approves how they set their rates. And the protection class is usually a significant piece of that. That can vary by company to company, whether they use a higher swing to actuariales or whether they're looking more specifically at protection classes. But they'll use that to calculate their rates, and that goes from there. So if we, and we have a copy of the schedule, we're in touch with these folks on a regular basis. If we believe we have done things like implemented an inspection program that would have an impact on that protection class, we will call them out to do another assessment and regrade us. When they regrade, they provide that information to the insurance companies, and then we would certainly help, help to publicize that. For instance, when Woodland consolidated with Clark County Fire and Rescue, at our next rating, we went from a, one is the best, 10 is no, no fire protection. And the city of Woodland went from a six to a five. So we improved that grade by one point. There's currently no Class Ones in the state of Washington, and there's only a couple of Class Twos.
Did I hear you correctly in your presentation? Maybe I didn't hear correctly, but I thought I heard you say that Woodland had a lower protection classification than Ridgefield and the Center.
They, they did prior to consolidation. Now they have the same.
Okay. And they have inspections and we don't?
Correct. They're, they're...
How does that get better?
They both, well, so they, they all currently have a five, although Woodland is a lower five closer to a six than they are.
So now we're dealing with decimal points?
Yeah, you could say that. Collectively as an organization, we're looking to try to move towards a four. And they're, they're kind of, they're, the rates generally follow in pairs, so a one to two isn't as big of a jump as a two to three. Three to four, not as big of a jump as four to five. So for us, getting from a five to four would be a more substantial impact than, than was the six to five. And without the inspection program, there is not likely any chance of us being able to get to a four.
Thank you for answering my question.
Certainly.
Anything further for Chief Jackson? All right. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
All right. One thing did get missed off the agenda this evening, and that was a proclamation in regards to Make a Difference Day. So Ms. Coleman, did you want to join me up front, or did you want me to read this from the DS?
Sure.
Come on up. All right. Again, I apologize if this didn't make the agenda this evening. Make a Difference Day, October 26, 2019. Whereas serious, hold on one second. I can't see anymore either. I'm having a problem tonight. Here we go. All right. Whereas serious social problems concern our nation and threaten its future. And whereas connection with others and working together through volunteer service can bridge differences that separate people and help solve serious social problems. And whereas we, the American people, have a strong tradition of philanthropy, I can't say the word, philanth, help me out.
Philanthropy.
Thank you. And volunteerism. I can't get my mouth to move that way. And volunteerism. Whereas USA Weekend Magazine and its affiliate newspapers, the Points of Light Foundation and its affiliate volunteer centers have joined together to promote, to promote an annual National Day of Doing Good that celebrates and strengthens the spirit of volunteer service. And whereas millions of self-sacrificing individuals touch and enhance the lives of millions of national Make a Difference Day by giving where there is a need, rebuilding what has been torn down, teaching where there is a desire to learn and inspiring those who may have lost hope. And whereas volunteer service is an investment in the future, we must share. And whereas the Woodland School District and the city of Woodland have joined together to promote and nurture an annual Make a Difference Day in the city of Woodland and in Byrnes. Now therefore, I Mayor William Aifan, in consultation with the Woodland City Council and Woodland School Board, do hereby proclaim October 26, 2019, as Make a Difference Day in the city of Woodland and urge all citizens to support and observe this day by connecting with friends, fellow employees and relatives, and with religious, school and civic groups to engage in projects that make a difference and which benefit our community dated this 21st day of October, 2019. Thank you for all your hard work and your team's hard work putting this together. I know it's not, I know it's not an easy one. So let's step right over here. Mr. Voice. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you putting this on for the city. It's huge.
Well, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows, I don't know if council has been officially invited to volunteer at the Make a Difference Day this Saturday, but if you have, if you have the availability, I highly recommend that you come out and join us on Saturday. And then also those in the crowd, if you haven't volunteered, I urge you to come volunteer and help clean up people's yards that need it, elderly, handicapped. We just, we urge you to come out and help clean up the community in downtown. So, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. What's that? Eight o'clock in the middle school commons?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to citizen communication for items not on the agenda. First up, we have Mr. Bob Wile. I'll have you step forward and state your name and address. I'll give you five minutes to address council. Welcome this evening.
Welcome. I'm Commissioner Bob Wile, and on behalf of the Port of Woodland, the Port of Woodland is going to dedicate a lot of things to our transportation budget. The Port of Woodland, I'm going to read a letter the commission has signed, they've sent me here to read it for you guys. The Port of Woodland is dedicated to the responsible development of growth within the Port of Woodland District, specifically the impacts to the city of Woodland. The need for a citywide transportation plan has been critically needed for over a decade. Traffic congestion is plaguing our city due to all the impacts of growth throughout the region, impacting our residents and our businesses on a daily basis. We have heard from many of our constituents that the solutions need to be developed. Based on this overwhelming need, the Port of Woodland has committed to be a partner to the city of Woodland and is dedicating $50,000 annually over the next two years towards the development of such a long-term plan. The significant issue is critical for all entities from the city, the port, the school district, and the two counties to be willing, committed, and a participatory sponsor, responsible planning and development must start with transportation. The Port Commission encourages all partners to participate in partnering towards solution beginning now rather than kicking the metaphorical can down the road. We, the Port of Woodland Commission, appreciate the call to action by the city to address transportation and the council's request by Mayor Wilfan for the port to take a financial role in our future. Sincerely, the Port of Woodland Commission.
So you showed up to give us money this evening, is what I just heard? Thank you very much. Yes, absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. We appreciate you being here this evening, Commissioner Wile. We're, we're trying to solve the problem, and it's partnerships like yours that are going to make that possible. So we appreciate you. Thank you very much. Next up, Beacon Youth. Is that correct? All right. I'll have you step forward and state your name.
Hi, I'm Gillian Carter, and this is Katie Seymour. We are representing the youth from the Beacon, and there's usually more of us, but on November 7th, the Youth and Family Link and the Jordan Project are presenting a town hall youth panel. And some of our friends from the Beacon are going to share what it's like growing up in Kowalski County. And we just want to invite you guys to attend, and we have some flyers if you guys want to.
Oh, awesome. I'll take those from you, yes. And where's this going to be held? Thank you.
Youth and Family Link in Longview.
Oh, okay. Awesome. Well, hold on now, hold on now. Don't be, don't be trying to step away that fast. Is this an annual event that occurs?
So this is a new event that is occurring. Last year, they did a bunch of town halls. They did one here in Woodland, Longview, and up in Castle Rock as part of the Drug-Free Communities Coalition. And this year, when we started talking about it, I'm actually one of the founders of the Jordan Project, and it was started because my daughter passed away of a drug overdose two years ago. And so when we started talking about it, these youths have amazing voice, they have stories to tell, and I think it's more impactful than hearing adults just spout facts and figures. So we really wanted to give the youth a chance to speak to community members and let them know, you know, what it's really like growing up in our county and our cities, so, yeah.
Well, we appreciate that. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to hear for your family's loss.
And nice to see a fellow Fort Vancouver graduate. I know, I was like, I watched it, I go, I went to high school with him.
I was wondering, I wanted to say something, but, oh.
Yeah.
Good to see you.
Yes, yes.
That was awkward.
Yeah.
Because I was thinking it.
Sorry. I know, I kept like, I'm like, yeah, anyways.
So, now, don't run away now so fast. So is this, this isn't going to be, so last year you guys traveled, and this year you're going to keep it up in the Longview area. Have you contacted the school district already to let them know this is going on, or?
We are in contact with them and the local law enforcement, and we've been, you guys are actually our final, fifth and final city that we've gone to, taken the youth, and they've, they've all spoken.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Awesome.
Trying to get, you know, leaders. We want people to come, not only listen to the youth, but then start sparking the conversations of what can we all do together to try to make our community stronger and better for these youths.
Good. Well, I know that the sheriff made a round robin here, oh, the chief has left. I think it was last year, he made his way around the county to the different schools, which, and I stepped in on some of those as well, and it was very insightful, I think, for the parents that were there and for those that were there getting their information. So, Mrs. Graham was there, you were there. So we appreciate all the work that you're doing. So we will get this out on our, on our social media pages and let folks know as well. Okay? Thank you for coming out.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I have no one else signed up on items not on the agenda. Now is your opportunity to step forward and speak if you failed to sign up at the beginning of the meeting. All right. Seeing no one else. Moving on to items on the agenda. I have no one signed up at this time. If you failed to do so at the beginning of the meeting, now is your opportunity to step forward and speak for items on the agenda. All right. Seeing no one. Moving on to a portion of the agenda for approval.
Move to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Humbert, second by Councilmember Chapman. Will please take the vote.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Frederick?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Humbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Plaza?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
All right. The agenda's been approved. Moving on to reports of city council. Mrs. Graham.
About the only thing of really super, super importance that I attended in the last couple of weeks was our Rotary Club's Big Gold Leaf event at Summit Grove on Saturday night, where we had a lovely dinner, auction, and lots of, hmm, let's see, what's a good word, networking maybe?
There was networking.
And I was at my table.
Oh, I was too, at my table.
Okay, all right. As long as we get our jobs. So it was very wonderful to be part of that this year, and we had one little, new little catch to it, and it went really, really well, and it was a lot of fun. And hopefully, in the next week or so, we will know what our, how many, how much in funds we did raise, and I think we did very well this year, so.
There was one donation that was made, I want to say in $10,000.
Correct.
How much was it?
No, it was 10. It was 10.
And I missed, there was so much talking going on that I missed who it was.
That, well, it's American something, but it is a foundation that was started by the previous owner of, well, it would have been probably Columbia Coal Store, which is lineage now.
Oh, okay. Okay, awesome.
It was their donation.
Okay. I did miss that one.
And then McDonald's did 2,000. Yes. As a business.
Oh, that's nice.
Yes, and I, I know of a couple more that are in the process of deciding which route they want to go with, and so.
Good. Good.
It was a lot of fun.
Fantastic. I know there was a lot of money raised at my table.
Yeah. I'm, I'm wearing part of the raisin. This is an auction item.
Ms. Coleman went home with quite a few items that evening, I'll say. And a trip, I think. Yes. All right. Thank you.
So we appreciate everybody's participation.
It was a good time. Anyone else?
I attended the WQCC meeting, and that was very informative. We haven't had one for a while, and it was nice to catch up with what everybody's doing and to know that we're all kind of on the same page.
Yes. Mrs. Rounds?
I also attended the Gold Leaf, which was very, very nice. But I went to the United Way fundraiser up in Longview at the Fairgrounds Event Center, and which was the power of the purse on Thursday night. And it's one of the biggest ones they've ever had. They've been, they've been having it three or four years, I think, maybe five, I'm not sure how many, but it was huge this year. So, but very nice event.
Good. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Chapman?
I didn't do anything, I was just reminding everybody that next Monday, October 28th, is First Responders Day. So give a always shout out to your first responder, you see, chief, chief, thank you guys very much. Remind everybody, give your guys a hand, watch your guys do the community stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. All right. Reports of standing committee. Mr. Fredericks, finance and general government.
We did not meet. We did not have a quorum. Councilmember Rounds and myself, I think we're out of town. I know I was out of town. So we canceled that meeting, and our next meeting is scheduled for November 12th at 5:30, which I believe is a, not a normal day. It's a Tuesday. Not a normal day for us.
Oh, Monday's a holiday, aren't we? All right. Reports of advisory committee. Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Graham?
I have the votes. We still meet at noon at The Grange for our lunch meetings, and it is a brown bag. We're still looking for nominations for Citizen Business and Employee of the Year. We will be holding a Halloween judging of costumes in our local businesses. I don't know if anybody has turned in their applications yet, but we do need to have something to go by. So if they could get those in in the next, no, it'll be this week, so we can do our detail. There will be a Christmas lighting contest also, so we will be putting out...
What's the prize?
Acknowledgement that you have the prettiest lights.
Perfect.
Is that the same way for the Halloween costumes? Who looks the cutest and the scariest, maybe?
Oh, is there, is there a contest for that as well?
That's what I just said.
Oh, I missed that part. I just heard Christmas, I just heard Christmas lights and competition. That's all, I heard competition.
Well, there's, there also will be Halloween costume contests also, but you have to give us an application for it. You could reach those online at the Woodland, Washington Chamber website.
Done.
Thank you. Our banquet, annual banquet is going to be the 18th of January 2020 at the Heathcliff Lodge, starting at 5:00. We have changed it up a little bit this year. We are going to be celebrating businesses instead of calling it an installation banquet. We are calling it a celebration of businesses here in town. I know that letters went out this past weekend telling of our new things that we are doing and sponsorship letters, and we are requesting that businesses, if they would like to advertise, the Chamber has, is going to purchase special bags for a swag bag type situation so that all of the customers that come, participants that come that evening will receive the same gift, but we still are optioning out for centerpieces which will be raffled off. So it's an opportunity for businesses to advertise to 150 people, all in one setting. And there's a couple of other old things going on. There will be, but that information has gone out to all Chamber members. And we had our elections of officers and our speakers tomorrow, our, of our police officers speaking on the levy lift, lift issue. And Mr. Jeff Ray will also be there, who is running for the school board, to introduce us.
Am I understanding, that's a, that's a nail-biter of an election right there.
I'm sure it is.
That one right there.
And I see Mr. Ray is in our audience tonight.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying.
I know.
If I'm not mistaken, you're running out of hose.
Yeah. But it's nice to see you, Matt. And that's about all I have, so if there's anything else that anybody wants to...
I encourage the Chamber to throw some hard-hitting questions at Mr. Ray. See if he can handle it. All right. Questions for Mrs. Graham this evening.
Mrs. Graham, do you know if the other school board seat that is up is going to also be at the Chamber?
Not that I am aware of. Not that I have seen.
Do you have any other things scheduled for election? So we've, I know you've done a few council members, or for council positions, I should say.
Yes. Mr. Chapman, Mr. Wile was there. Deanna Holland was in, Scott Peabody.
Okay. And then we've got the levy lift, lift on the schedule for the city, and they're coming in tomorrow. Mr. Ray's coming in tomorrow as well. I would encourage, and take it back to the board, I would encourage some more school board. I think that that one's important as well. We've got some, I'm just throwing it back there so you can take it back to your folks.
I know. I do believe they have been asked, but there's not, not been the response.
Gotcha. Okay. Perfect. Sorry, let me jump in on the...
My only question was, yeah, because I know that, that's going to be an interesting race, that seat. Just for personal reasons, I'd like to. That one I would like to attend.
Well, I've...
Because I'm sure Mr. Ray is probably going to win hands down.
I don't know. We'll see how the debate goes tomorrow.
He's always right.
All right. Questions for Mr. Graham. All right. Seeing none. Moving on to reports of city officers. It's my first day back after a long hiatus. Thank you, Mrs. Rounds, for holding down the fort, and I think, did, did you have to take over?
No.
Or were you here all three times?
All three.
Oh, no, she's all, all three. So I appreciate you. Thank you very much. And I see that there's been some notes that have left here for me on how to turn on my microphone and how to turn things up, so I appreciate that, just in case I forgot. So, thank you.
Going to ask.
I too attended, I too attended the WQCC meeting this past Wednesday. School district is doing some amazing things out there, so I encourage council to take a look at the minute. Have we posted the minutes yet, or? Let me dig those out. And take a look those, there, there seems to be that they're reformatting their program at the school and trying to do K through 12, ready for the world versus just finishing school and saying, yes, we got your certificate, and providing some life skills. So that, that's nice to see, and I know Mrs. Riley is, Asha Riley is heading up that program and doing amazing things with that, so that's awesome. And the port update was good, too. Looking forward to the changes that they're making over at their area, and then also some of the development that's going to be coming into the city. Obviously, they're a great partner to us in bringing us $50,000 this evening and another 50 the year after that, so definitely, things are moving over there, so that's exciting because I think that benefits the community as a whole. Gold Leaf event was awesome. Room was full of people, and appeared some exciting progress has been completed up on top of the hill there with a new retaining wall, which is good. I can't wait to get up there and take a look at it once they're done. And if I'm not mistaken, Mrs. Larson said 1.3 miles of walking trail will be completed this year. Is that your, or?
I think it is. That's what there will be. I don't know if it's going to be completed this year.
on my microphone and how to turn things up, so I appreciate that, just in case I forgot. So, thank you.
Going to ask.
I too attended, I too attended the WQCC meeting this past Wednesday. School District is doing some amazing things out there, so I encourage council to take a look at the minute. Have we posted the minutes yet? Or, let me dig those out. And take a look at those. There seems to be that they're reformatting their program at the school and trying to do K-12 Ready for the World versus just finishing school and saying, yes, we got your certificate, and providing some life skills. So that's nice to see, and I know Mrs. Riley is, Asha Riley is heading up that program and doing amazing things with that, so that's awesome. And the port update was good, too. Looking forward to the changes that they're making over at their area, and then also some of the development that's going to be coming into the city. Obviously, they're a great partner to us in bringing us $50,000 this evening and another 50 the year after that, so definitely, things are moving over there, so that's exciting because I think that benefits the community as a whole. Gold Leaf event was awesome. Room was full of people, and appeared some exciting progress has been completed up on top of the hill there with a new retaining wall, which is good. I can't wait to get up there and take a look at it once they're done. And if I'm not mistaken, Mrs. Larson said 1.3 miles of walking trail will be completed this year. Is that your, or?
I think it is. That's what there will be. I don't know if it's going to be completed this year.
Oh, is that total?
A portion of it.
A portion, okay. Gotcha. Okay. It was loud in there. My table was a little rowdy.
It was loud.
I couldn't get my group under control. I had a hard time controlling the inmates on Saturday, but we had a good time. Well, and I was leading the charge. Yeah, so, which didn't help. And I cannot remember for the life of me the, what this designation is. So it's the Woof Group, the W-O-O-F Group, and it is the Kenton Erwin, Erica Rodman, Me Shan Bond, Mr. Luckman, Steve Luckman over there at Luckman Coffee. There's a whole group of them. Dave Lester is part of this group as well. I tasked them with some things. Internally, we were trying to find some kind of incentive or beautification route for the city, and internally with staff, it was suggested that I reach out to a group of folks within the community and ask them for what that route should be instead of dictating what that route should be from the city, which was a good call. We've got some smart people sitting over here at this table. So I've tasked them with coming up with a beautification route and a beautification plan for the main routes within the city, and with that, bringing back to us ways that we can help some of the smaller businesses within town along those routes to get them beautified. Some of the businesses within, especially out of SR 503 and on Pacific and Atlantic have done some tremendous improvements to their property, invested some money, or financial, some financial good into their property, making the city better for all of us, not only more appealing visually, but I think it just goes to show how much they love it here in Woodland as well. So trying to figure out a way to help those folks out, and whether that be irrigation meters with no hookup cost, something, something to incentivize more businesses to jump on board. So this group has been tasked with that, and they've come up with a slogan, which is branching out. So that's going to be the program that they're doing, and I'm going to be meeting with them again here in the next couple of weeks to figure out exactly what kind of plan they're coming up with. We are Tree City USA. We have been since 2007, and they're looking at getting more trees planted within the city as well with some of the businesses that are out there. So more to come on that, just in case you hear some rumblings around town. The mayor's up to something crazy. I've got a group of people working on some stuff to help out our smaller business community, and then also go along with what Ms. Coleman's been doing around town with new sidewalks and those types of things and how to keep it going, keep that ambition going there. So more to come. Chamber. So I spoke with President Urban last week, late last week, and explained to her some news that I had heard during one of our department head meetings, which was some of the businesses in town are suffering at lunchtime right now. Their attendance is low. So I called her, and she should be coming to the Chamber, and I had just suggested to her that maybe traveling at lunchtime on Tuesdays instead of just meeting at The Grange or at least once a month, something, just to kind of help out our business community a little bit. She is telling me, though, that most folks that are showing up to those meetings are grabbing their lunch from local businesses and then having that grange, which is fantastic. I was happy to hear that. So I'm just throwing that back at Chamber a little bit to maybe help each other out by maybe once a week, or once a month, traveling around to a local restaurant, having a meeting there. It just sounds like we've got some folks here in town that might be struggling a little bit at lunchtime. So hopefully, once we get some development out of the port, we'll have some busy lunchlines, and people will be feeling the benefits of that. Let's see here. Police flyer is in front of you this evening. This will be going out on Thursday, just so you're aware. This is the information on the levy lift that the city has put out there to fund two additional police officers and an administrative sergeant. So that is for council, and just in case you get some questions with that, because the constituents will be receiving these, about 1,600, Mrs. Rip is what you wrote, will be getting these in their utility bills that go out on Thursday. Questions on that portion at this point? Mrs. Graham?
Will the officers be bringing this information tomorrow to pass out to our Chamber members?
Yes, and they will be on their own time as well. I want to make that very clear.
Correct.
So they may have additional stats or information to share besides just that this is very generic and non-committal. Either way, it's just the general information there that's coming from the city. We've got to be very careful on our line there, so. So with that said, ballots will be arriving this week, and I encourage everyone to take the time to-
I received mine today.
Oh, you did? I was hoping for mine. I didn't get mine. Oh, all right. I live on the west side. They're withholding it from me. So I encourage everyone out there to do your research and vote, please, and don't leave those lying around. Actually, take the time to read the book, do your research, and vote what you, how you believe you want your community to be and the vision that some of these folks have. So it's important that all citizens that are registered to vote get out there and do that. Questions for me?
Can I have them?
Yes, fire away.
On Thursday at the high school, there will be a career fair in the morning for the students, and in the afternoon, employers are coming or looking for woodland works, job seekers, and employers. Come and see what they have to offer. We have, I believe it's 60 now, employers that are going to be there. So if you need a job, you know somebody that needs a job, come and see what they have to offer. I think it's going to be a great thing.
They're going to do interviews right there, too.
Right. And then you can fill out resumes, and they'll help you fill them out if you need to. It'll be good.
Thank you for, and the city will be making a big showing that day. Police Department will be there. Public Works will be there. Treasurer's Office will be there. Am I missing? Are you going to be there, Mr. Goddard? Or Melissa will be there.
Melissa will be there.
So Planning Department will be there as well. The mayor may make a showing in a costume. I think he'll be there all day, just saying. Yeah, what? In my goofy hat? Yes, I'll be wearing my goofy hat. So a lot of businesses here in town. It was nice, that was the other thing that Asha spoke about during the WQCC meeting, is the response from our business community within Woodland here and the teachers not knowing the businesses that we have here in town. So it's nice that they can partner with the school district, and some of them will be there looking for, looking to hire some of our students here, especially our teenagers that are going to be graduating here pretty soon, so that's good stuff. Thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Boyce?
Okay. Just last week, myself and sister daughter attended the Park County Government Roundtable and Transportation Group. We're trying to reach out more into Park County and get involved. When we have the plans for Exit 21, you know, back to go on the regional transportation plan they have, their main priority right now, they're wanting for replacement of the I-5 Bridge. It's their number one priority. They also had a lot of concerns about the initiative out there that would per tab fees. Most of them all have transportation benefit districts that are funded with tab fees, so they're very concerned about losing those fees, and it sounded like most of the jurisdictions can say this is a good opportunity. So it was a good meeting. I also attended the Gold Leaf event, WQCC and the port. I guess we're talking about the port today. The port helped coordinate a newsletter between the city, school district, and the port. And we're going out to-
Went out today, and the rest will work out tomorrow.
And it's very polished, and so I think they really enjoyed this, going to plan this. Yeah, so I also wanted to mention that I believe most of you know we've been having some issues with the recording equipment in our live streaming. We're continuing to work on that with our IT provider. We're looking to obtain some additional new equipment shortly, and we're hoping to get something more in line, so it's working progress. And other than that, I've got the announcements, notification of the liquor license renewal at Woods Lodge, we're going to go to grocery outlet, giving out those pizza. Upcoming community events, October 28th, Budget Workshop on the 2020 preliminary budget. October 26th, Make a Difference Day, which is third up. November 4th, public hearing for the 2020 budget for property tax study. November 12th, Budget Work Session, 7:00 p.m. November 18th, Public Hearing for the 2020 final budget, first reading. November 25th, Budget Work Session, if needed, 7:00 p.m., if necessary. And December 2nd, Adoption, Adopt Ordinance for the 2020 budget. So we have until December 31st to adopt the budget, and we'll take this.
Questions for Mr. Boyce? Is this our second meeting in the month?
No, this is the second.
Okay. I'm just verifying.
For all of us, it is.
Well played, sir. Well played.
It was good.
Yeah. They're just coming out left and right tonight. Oh, goodness. All right. Moving on to consent items.
Move to a perfect consent items?
Second.
Normally, we don't have discussion, but I have discussion.
Okay. I have motion on the floor by Councilmember Hamburg, seconded by Councilmember Rounds, and Mr. Fredericks would like discussion.
So is it possible on Section A, the vouchers, is it possible to add those to the agenda? And if so, if we can't, why?
Well, we're usually finalizing them, being on time to follow the month. Up until the end of the month, we want to turn off the cost spent today.
When do you have them prepared?
Check is usually between 3:00 and 5:00.
Reason I ask is because I want to make sure that there's transparency in what funds are being spent, and I don't think we've ever done that, so I think it's, I think it would be entirely appropriate to put the vouchers, even if it's the approved vouchers from the previous meeting, on the agenda or something that just shows this is what we approved. And I'm only one member, so if there's not majority support, I just think it's something for transparency purposes that it would make sense in adding.
So in the, in the, it's not that we do this, we actually put that through and to the, to the, to the, to publish it.
But they're not in the, they're not actually in the council packet?
They are. In the council.
From the previous?
If you looked at the details.
Are the details in there?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
Okay. So you have to do a little research?
Yes.
Okay. As long as they're being published?
Even the whole voucher packet.
Yes, the whole voucher packet, not the summary sheet.
No, we, we have the voucher.
Why is that?
We, we-
Yeah, I'd like, I think it's appropriate to put that in there because I don't think, yeah, I don't think people, there's a perception maybe that they're not, they don't have visibility to how the money is being spent, and I think it would be appropriate to put, put that on there to show this is, these are the expenditures, this is how your tax money is being spent. All they see is us approving this, you know, we approve the consent agenda, and it includes the vouchers that we, that the Finance Committee looks at. We sign it, we give it to you that it's been approved per, I don't know if that's an audit requirement, is that an audit requirement? And so we sign it, but no one ever really sees it unless they do a public records request. Okay.
Let me start, just pardon the member of my report there.
All the discussions that have been, so that, 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 yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you doing that.
Any further discussion on consent items this evening? Will the clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Grant?
Aye.
Councilmember Frieder?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Humbert?
Aye.
Consent items, consent items have been approved. Moving on to action items. Action item E, ordinance number 1440, to prohibit marijuana cooperatives and to clarify the existing citywide prohibition on retail sales and related products within the city of Woodland per Woodland Municipal Code 17.1, 17.50.040, final reading.
Move adoption of ordinance number 1440.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Fredericks, seconded by Councilmember Humbert. Councilmember Fredericks?
I had all my discussion at the last meeting. Again, this is to make some language changes, and it needs to be done, I think.
Councilmember Humbert?
No comment.
Further discussion? All right. Seeing nothing else, will the clerk please take the vote on action item E, ordinance number 1440?
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Plaza?
Aye.
Councilmember Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Humbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Action item E has passed. Moving on to action item F, ordinance number 1443, Budget Amendments 2019, first and final reading.
Move adoption of ordinance number 1443.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Fredericks, seconded by Councilmember Rounds. Councilmember Fredericks.
Ms. Rip, all of these budget amendments were previously through council action, with the exception of the revenues that you're truing up to reality, but all the other expenditure increases were adopted by the council previously, correct? And that includes publications? Does that include everything? So if there was an increase in the overall budget amount, that would not have come before council? Correct?
Are we true that some of the line items are, something going around?
Okay.
Line item adjustments.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. Got it. I looked at them briefly. They, I didn't see anything out of the norm of what we normally do, but I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Councilmember Rounds?
No comment.
Further discussion? All right. Will the clerk please take the vote on action item F, ordinance number 1443?
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Frieder?
Aye.
Councilmember Humbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Plaza?
Aye.
All right.
Action item F has passed. The time is now 8:06. I'd like to take a break for five minutes. Is that enough?
We just need to get those cookies.
I know you need to get the cookies. How about six minutes? Twelve. But we're going to, we're going to pass some cookies down.
Hold on.
Here we go. I'll take those ones.
Down this way?
This way. Pass them this way. Here we go. Thank you, Mrs. Graham, for bringing treats tonight for our workshop.
For our date, so that's good.
All right. Right now, we're going to talk about legislative priorities for 2012. Oh, sorry. It's 8:18. We're in a workshop now. We're going to talk about legislative priorities somewhat, and I'm going to kind of give you a breakdown of where I'm sitting on the city's side and hopefully get some input from you. I've already started the conversation at the WQCC meeting on Wednesday with our partners here in the city, the school district and the port, and informed them that we need to start having this conversation so we can be a little bit more prepared when we go to Olympia in January, excuse me, to see our legislators. So to recap, last year's legislative priorities, number one was transportation, and that was to, this is all city-supported legislation here, legislative priorities. So support funding for the construction of I-5, Exit 21 area. Obviously, we are in the middle of a planning process.
These are so good.
So, other things that were on the legislative priority list last year was the support for the capital budget allocations. One was for the city applied for, we're just gonna do a quick recap here for a few minutes. City applied for a grant through the Public Works Department to do a Horseshoe Lake Park ADA compliance and making it more recycling friendly, along with a, what the chief would call a squirt park, but a splash pad out there, and some new restrooms. That, that request was denied, but we came in close. We were, I think we're a little bit of a runner-up, and I think we're, we're pretty close to getting that this following year if we reapply. But during this last legislative session, we did receive $82,000 that we can use towards a match for that grant. So right now, that grant is 378, what, what is, what's happening tonight?
Oh, Susan, she's always looking at.
I don't even know what's happening right now. I, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to do business, we're trying, I'm trying to do business right now.
Carry on, carry on. We never had these issues with...
With Carol, yeah, with Mrs. Rounds. Guys need to get back with the program. So we received 82, so right now, our portion's 378 and some change, and we've got about $82,000. Over the next few months, I'll be approaching some other stakeholders that could get some skin in this game, and hopefully we can get those improvements done. This isn't really a, a year for this one, it will be in 2021 again because we're asking for money, but I'll verify that with Ms. Coleman, is everything okay?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's perfect. The city of Woodland also applied for a Safe Routes to School grant. Part of that grant request with matching funds for $145,000 for phase one, and that is for sidewalks, bike routes from the, I call it the intermediate school, but it's actually now...
North Fork.
Thank you, North Fork Elementary, all the way to Gun Club, and that would be improvements all along 503. We came close to getting that one as well, but we just, we just didn't hit the mark, so we're going to reapply for that one as well. But the good news is the state did give us $235,000 towards that project, so our matching funds are there, which gives us a higher score to receive that grant at the next application period. And here's Ms. Coleman now. And Ms. Coleman, the Safe Routes to School, we received the 235 in matching funds for that grant, when is, when is that one good again?
That grant is reopening in this year.
Okay.
And, and so we'll be applying for it again this year.
So, here on our legislative priorities last year's was what we're going over for 2019.
Right.
Our matching funds for that was 145,000, so we've, we far exceeded our matching funds, which means we should be a very good candidate to get that grant this time.
Yes, actually, because we have somebody who's, well, we have sponsorship from the legislator, it brings our score up when we submit for the grant.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were raising your hand, sorry. So, that one is still moving forward, and then if you could speak to the Horseshoe Lake, I just kinda said we've got the 82,000, we're gonna reach out to some other partners that could potentially help us out with that 378 matching.
Correct.
Is there anything we need to know about that one at this point?
No, the only thing I was gonna say is that we are applying for receiving the scholarship or the grant dollars for both the projects that can be spent at a later date, and then we'll apply for the grants again, showing that we already have the commitment from the legislator, which brings it up to another bracket for availability. Would be Horseshoe Lake, we're going after a couple of, do I need to mention entities that we're looking at? Okay, a couple of different entities for some additional matching funds, and which would bring our match down lower.
Perfect, good. But we're still looking at going after that, so this, that project may pop back up on your list in the coming year for support through the legislation of, in 21 session.
Yes, it's actually opening up at the beginning of this next year, since it was only available every other year, so we've gone through the year, so it's gonna open up at the beginning of this next year.
Perfect, okay.
We wouldn't be looking at matching funds until the following year.
Okay.
Because we have a whole year of being able for design, starting construction at the end of the year, which the funds that we already have, all the money would be spent first, then we would have that month of following year.
Perfect. So Rotary Club received some, we were in support of that as a city for the Scott Hill Park complex, and that received, I wanna say 500,000 this last go-around, does that sound right?
Yeah.
Okay. Fort Vancouver Regional Library is working on a new library, obviously we support that project here in the community, and they received some money from the state in the amount of 500,000 as well. And then the Pool and Recreation District was also on your list, and I believe they received 805,000. So, quite a list that we went up there with, and quite a bit of money that we returned with this time. Hopefully we can be as successful in 2021 as well. Some of the other things on the list were regulatory relief, and revenue flexibility, unfunded mandates, and do not harm, specifically surrounding public records requests, if there's any support with that, we'll be, I'd like to put that back on there as well because that is a huge hardship. I'm looking for politically correct words here.
On local government.
On local government, thank you.
Good job, Ms. Humbert.
Thank you. 14 years right there. Yes, hardship on local government. Public safety, I don't know if this one, chief, medical costs for the offenders, is that one still on the rise? Is this something?
Well, it depends on, it depends on the circumstances. Sometimes when, when officers go to look, certain offenders, they're, they're required by the jail to take them to the hospital for a pre-booked check.
Okay.
And those medical costs are now exponentially higher because they won't just check them and see if they're, I guess, bookable, for lack of a better term, they make them go through, the charges for an entire medical exam, like when any of us would go to the doctor, that's...
And that bill gets sent to us?
Yes.
Okay.
See exam on top of the pre-booked check.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Before...
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, before we book them, we have to take them and have them...
Occasionally, occasionally.
Occasionally, not all.
Maybe someone who's a little bit past the, the legal limit for breath tests or blood alcohol content, and they have to go get checked because their blood alcohol is too high.
And even if they have insurance, they don't bill the insurance, they bill the city.
Correct.
So, two questions, chief. First question is, is if you're chasing someone and they fall down and break their leg, do you just take them to the hospital then, and then book them after they get out?
We can, but then we'd have to have, we can, but, but then we would have to have an officer waiting there until they, until they go out.
So they don't tell you?
And once, and once we book them and say, hey, let us know when this person comes out, the whole two, three, four, five days, they'll send us the bill.
Oh.
So, yeah, this...
Are they on the state, so if, are they on the state insurance fund? So if, if someone gets hurt, do they, are they allowed to be on state insurance? So, in my mind, they would be, if you had someone, we shouldn't get hit with the full cost of that, they should...
We do, because at that point, they become our responsibility.
Well, they become our responsibility, but why are they not funded under the state healthcare plan? There's a legislative priority for you.
That, I was just gonna say, and that's a great point because I think we've had this conversation before.
I can't answer that.
It's on your representatives.
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds to me like maybe this is something that we should explore and bring back some information to council for consideration.
I, I don't know if it's a priority for the city because I think we have bigger fish in fry than this.
Well, we do have, we do have an avenue for certain offenses that we can recoup some funding, but that doesn't, I think it pays for straight time, not necessarily overtime, not necessarily salary and benefits when it comes to an hourly wage for an officer, which includes salary plus benefits. There is, there is ways that we can recoup that by DUI cost recovery.
Are we doing that now?
Occasionally, although we haven't had the opportunity to have anything, and I use this term very loosely, big happen.
Okay.
In my previous life, we did it often, where there would be several officers that responded to a scene, and you would count all the officers that were there on straight time, all the officers that were there on, on overtime, and send that bill up to a certain limit, and that would be reimbursed.
Through the court system?
Yeah, well, not through the court system, through state traffic.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. There used to be cost recovery through the court system, through a form that you filled out with any arrests that you did, is that not being completed now through Council County?
I don't, I don't, I can't leave it.
Okay.
I don't know.
Do you know if we're currently doing cost recovery on someone who gets sent through the process and found convicted of driving under the influence? Are we going after folks to have them pay for our costs associated with that because of the amount of time that our officers are tied up processing someone through that, through that whole ordeal? And many of these people have the ability to pay, but we don't go after them, and we'd have that built in. I'm not sure if the, who's our prosecuting attorney up there, if that's something that he would agree to, but is that something that we're actively going after to, for cost recovery?
We are not now, and I don't hold that program still quit.
Okay. Do you, I'm gonna throw another wild one at you as we're talking about this, back to the medical care. Do you know how much, on average, annually, we're spending on these exams, these bills that we're getting from the jail to get these folks incarcerated, I don't wanna call them incarcerated, to get them through the process?
I, I know that when we receive a bill, we, we pay half.
So it's about $150,000 a year that we pay for care and custody of prisoners? It's in that number?
No, it's not. It's, it's actually in addition to...
We're not getting a separate bill though, we're not getting, maybe a separate bill, but it's all lumped into one line item, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that line item right now is 150, but we'd have to go through and break that down?
It's not huge.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm using an approximate number off of memory.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have, we don't have that many incidents where we have to take an individual to, to the hospital to check.
Have you ever, have you ever looked at the bill that we get provided from them?
Yes.
And are you able to make heads or tails out of that bill?
From the county?
No, from the county. We get a bill for the care and custody of prisoners. Are you able to figure out how they're charging you? Because I've looked at it a couple times, and if, if this were a business, I'd refuse to pay it, because I didn't know what I was getting, what am I buying here?
It's by the bed.
By the name.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's a bed rate per day.
But here's what I'm confused by, if you run the number of people that were reincarcerated over a period of a month, we're not off-topic, this is a legislative priority, possibly. If you run that number, it, it never matches, because if, if we put 10 people in jail and we had 10 people in jail the entire month, we're still getting a very large bill, it doesn't change. Anyway, we are, to Councilmember Humbert's point, we probably are getting off-topic, so I will, I will save that for another day. I'm sorry for not being on the safety.
It's not bad, it's not bad.
The public safety committee, you're lucky I'm not there.
So, is this, is this something that council wants to keep on there or tweak? Medical costs for offenders should pa, the legislature, should pass legislation which provides health insurance under Apple Health for those arrested by city police and incarcerated by courts. And with personnel, blah, 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 blah.
Oh, yeah, it's already there.
It, it is, so we can continue with that and suggest, again, that's the question that you asked, I believe, last year, again, they'd be provided under Washington State Health, and I think that's the ask. So, it may be a little bit relief, I mean, we're asking it a lot, but it may help out other small cities across the state.
In the state of Washington, you'd probably have to unionize them first before they'd ever agree to that, if that's a whole number deal.
Okay, number five on last year's legislation, priorities, city encourages legislators consider AWC priorities. Has AWC come out with their 2020s yet?
I agree with them.
I know you don't.
I agree with these people.
I know.
There was a flyer.
Oh, there it is.
She did it on the process, two for three.
So, we can come back and we'll have another discussion about this, so I encourage council to read through those, and I know Mr. Fredericks will have some discussion points out of this flyer, and I think that's how we got down to the one-liner on number five, city encourages legislators consider AWC priorities instead of listing them out just due to the fact of disagreement with what those priorities should be on a few of the line items. And then, government fund a city also requests that the legislator resist proposals that would reduce or eliminate funds historically designated for cities, this can place an undue burden on cities to tax or assess fees on citizens in order to keep services stable. So, that's a pretty generic one, but just a nice little paragraph to our legislators when we visit, please don't do, and, don't provide a hardship to us, please, we are a small city with limited resources.
So, these, if I understand you correctly, mayor, these were the last ones that were adopted?
Yes, I wanted to recap real quick.
And you're suggesting number two be removed?
Let me go back here.
In its entirety?
I believe so, but I'm in a roundtable with Ms. Coleman on that one just to verify, because I don't believe that we'll be asking for money in this legislative session. There's always an opportunity, in the past, they have in the short session approved money, I think, and city of Woodland has been a, been a factor of that money, so it is possible that we could go up there and ask for some funding of a project, such as Scott Hill Park, or money for the library, I mean, it's possible that we could do that and put that on there and just ask for a capital budget amendment. So, these are ones though, that all, all of these listed here, we received money for in the last session.
Okay, how about, I have two priorities that I'd like to add.
Okay, let's throw it down.
I would like there to be an option that the cities can opt out of giving counties 20% of our public safety sales tax. That's just me though, I'm only one person.
I, I believe there was a newspaper article that came out that suggested the same thing recently.
I don't read the paper.
Yes. Ms. Chapman?
Bringing that up, my other job, we have RTTO, total association meeting, and Mr. Orka is there, so we listened to him talk and stuff, and I got him on the portal page, and then told him to decide, and discussing how we're approving, trying to get, make support of it and stuff like that, trying to think a little bit about this tax, getting it back to the cities and not, and they asked about exit 21, and I told him that we're coming, they heard the rumor bill, but an official that they have some plans, but haven't brought them to us, and he told me to bring back to everybody that he would be very interested to be here when the state shows up to give us our different options. He wants to be here to see what those options are.
Yes.
Very interested in this settlement. He posted on...
And we've, we haven't set those meetings yet, but I already, he's hit me up with that as well, I'll make sure that I invite him down when it's time. So, and, and back to Mr. Fredericks' point about the 20% public safety tax that funds his building, actually, the 80% funds his building, correct, and the county siphons off the 20% off the top. So one thing that some of the other small cities were already discussing, the lodging tax dollars again, to try to get our 0.02% back to the city, we were unsuccessful in this last session in 2019 to make that legislation happen, it did pass the senate, but it died in the house committee. So, that's one thing that the cities in Council County will be getting back together and asking that that legislation be changed. And something else that has come across my desk over the last week, and that is the growth management, the fact that Woodland sits in a very unique region, and we straddle two counties with one is GMA and one is not, there is no other city across Washington
So, we listened to him talk and stuff, and I got him a photo page, Mr. Finn, pointing aside, and discussing how we're approving, trying to get, you know, make support of it and stuff like that, trying to think a little bit about this tax, getting it back to the cities and not, and they asked about Exit 21, and I told him that we're coming, they heard the rumor bill, but they didn't official that they have some plans, but haven't brought them to us. And he told me to bring back to everybody that he would be very interested to be here when the state shows up to give us our different options. He wants to be here to see what those options are.
Yes.
Very interested in that settlement.
And we've, we haven't set those meetings yet, but I already, he's hit me up with that as well, and I'll make sure that I invite him down when it's time. Um, so, and, and back to Mr. Frederick's point about the, uh, 20% public safety tax that funds his building, uh, actually, the 80% funds his building, correct? Um, and the county siphons off the 20% off the top. So, one thing that some of the other small cities, we're already discussing, the lodging tax dollars again, to try to get our 0.02% back to the city. Uh, we were unsuccessful in this last session in 2019 to make that legislation happen. It did pass the Senate, but it died in the House Committee. So, uh, that's one thing that the cities in Calhoun County will be getting back together and asking that that legislation be changed. And something else that, uh, has come across my desk over the last week, and that is the growth management, um, the fact that Woodland sits in a very unique region, and we straddle two counties with, one is GMA and one is not. Um, there is no other city across Washington that is in this predicament. We do have cities that straddle two counties, but they are both GMA counties, so there's not the challenges that we have here. Uh, so the ask is that a legis, a legislative, a legislation change, uh, be made to allow the school district of Woodland to collect those mitigation fees only, just due to the fact that we are a GMA city residing in a GMA, or non-GMA county. So, that ask has already been thrown out there to our district legislators for, I consider it the first right of first refusal, uh, or the right of first refusal, did I say that right, chief? Right of first refusal, uh, to sponsor a bill. Uh, so, I've already got a conversation going with Mr. Orca to set a meeting to discuss those two items in particular. Uh, so we'll see what happens with that, and he's gonna share his thoughts with me on, on how he feels that should go. And if not, I will be branching out. If I can't get one of our district legislators to sponsor both of those bills, I'll be reaching out to, um, other legislators around us to help us attempt to get those passed.
So, and you're, can I ask you a question on that?
Yes.
The 2020, or the lodging tax dollars?
Yes.
It is my understanding that, uh, our senator voted no...
Yes.
On that, and both of the, um, 20th district representatives, House members voted no in committee.
Yes.
Could you have them provide us, just so there's not a breakdown in communication, could they provide us with an understanding of what their, what...
Reasoning?
What their reasoning is?
Okay.
Maybe there's a really good reason, and I don't know what that is, because it leads me to believe that they don't care, and I'm sure that's, that's not the case, uh, but the perception is, is that, um, that there's something wrong. And I'm having a difficult time trying to understand what the issue is. Who, who are they upsetting by saying yes to this? Is this a, are they upsetting the lobby or some? So I'm just not familiar with that, and I'd like to be, I'd like to understand what's their reasoning.
I, and, to be honest with you, I would too. I wasn't that much involved in this last one, uh, the state of Calhoun, so spearheaded this one, um, but I know that Calam is on board now, and, well, I went through the other cities, and the bus I spoke with that were kind of waffling last time, uh, but it seems to me that I would, I will say it in a workshop and I'll own it, is that they were paid off to step aside. So, um, they were, they were giving dollars in order to sit down and not join the fight. Um, so, is that, what is that called? Is that, is that, that's not extortion, what is that?
Well...
Bribery, thank you. I just like the word extortion, I might be. Uh, hush money, there we go.
I think Goddard called it correctly, it's politics.
Oh. Such a way with words, Mr. Goddard. The other words I used were a little, a little touchy, a little, a little tainted there, so, um...
Most likely it would be on voice of Woodland.
Probably, so, um, but there's already, there's already a movement by the other cities as of last week stating that, yes, they will, they want to bring this back up, and they're not done fighting for it. So, um, the cities are upset that the money's going away, and the county says, no, we need to keep it, but, and my, my reasoning behind is we're being treated completely differently than the rest of the state, along with Snohomish County, and we're the only ones that give this 2% to the county. I, I understand that they're using it for their own tourism, but they were unable to provide, uh, data. Want to ask for it on, if you need it, show me how it's benefiting Woodland. I haven't, they were unable to provide that to me, uh, during the conversation, and that's why I decided to join the fight to get it back. So, those are, those are my kind of priorities that I would like to see on this list as well. Um, the other thing is the change to transportation benefit districts. Uh, I don't know what's gonna happen. I have a feeling that the $30 tabs are going to pass, which is going to be, um, a detriment statewide, especially to the small cities. So, with the passage, a potential passage of I-976, um, I'm not quite sure what that means for us yet. So, I think that this conversation will happen when it comes to the legislation portion, and that all deals with transportation dollars. Um, so, I don't know if that puts us back further in the line once we have a project for 21, or what, so...
My understanding of how gas tax works is in this state is that you, the voters of, well, the legislative folks approve it, and that money's already spent. So, the money's already spent. They go out and they, they bond...
Yes.
New projects. But for the most part, all that money's gone. So, I, I don't, I'm sure they're getting money from somewhere to fund smaller projects, but I'm not... Do you have any insight as to how that works, Mr. Boyce?
No.
Okay. It's probably better that you don't know.
I think I made a comment to one of our legislators, uh, at one point that said, hey, I'll stop asking for money. How about you just give me all the gas tax that's spent inside the city limits of Woodland? Give me that, and I won't ask for any more grant dollars. Because I'm sure it's pretty significant, when we're only getting a portion of it back. What's that?
And you don't have it, do you?
No, I was laughed, I was laughed, and he walked away. So, uh, yes, there was some fan turn back and forth, and, anyway, always, always making the ask. So, is there anything else that is on, weighing on council's mind at this point, before we kind of put this into a document again, that you would like to see?
Looks good.
Is there, are those, are the two items that we just discussed is, I guess we'll bring those back for council discussion, and, um, we'll, we'll get them together with some narrative with those two. Is there anything else that you would like added, or that you would like to talk about at this point? Okay. I encourage you to look at the AWC flyer, uh, so we can have that discussion probably further into early December. I'm hoping to have some information from our partners, our other partners here within the city on, on what their plans are. Um, I know that they're thinking about it, so... The time is 8:45, and, where's my agenda at here? Um, I just lost it here. Perfect, thank you. And the second part of the workshop, I need to cancel this evening. I'm not ready to deliver the budget, and I apologize, this is my fault. Um, there's been a few, I, I still have some questions and, and concerns about it, uh, so I'm not ready to deliver to council this evening, I apologize, but we will be ready on Monday. Yes, we already had the meeting scheduled for Monday, I believe, is that correct?
Yeah.
Hey, Mr. Mayor Finn?
And that is all. So it's 8:46. Back...
Wait a second.
Yeah, next Monday.
Hold on before you move over here.
Go ahead.
When are you required to have it to the council?
Is there a requirement to have it to the council? Mrs. Rip.
How's that working for you?
It's not.
Well, I hope you plan on working until the 31st of December.
So, uh, when were you the first three Mondays?
Hey, 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 hey. This isn't question and answer time, not with me. Um, I, there's been, there's been a few changes that need to occur before we can give that to you. I don't want to give you a document that is...
Not correct?
Not correct, thank you.